The Hopkinton Town Council of January 21st, 2020 to order with a moment of silent meditation and some need for the flight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is the introduction of a new clerk in the town clerk's office, Lois Buck, and the senior clerk Talia Gillette in the planning department, Don Garrett.
Thank you. It's a pleasure and a privilege to announce that we have two new employees in town. The first one is Lois Buck, and she fills a vacant position in the clerk's office as a clerk in the town clerk's office. She began November 12th and is a lifelong Ashway resident. She graduated from Charahoe High School and also from the University of Rhode Island with honors in 1993 with a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She formerly worked in the private sector as an assistant office manager and also in the child care field and also as a department manager in West Kingston for 18 years. She, as a lifelong Ashway resident, she possesses a significant institutional knowledge of town history, which should be very helpful in town clerk's office. So be welcome at two times today.
Thank you very much.
That's awesome.
Thank you, and I'm very happy to work for the town. And I'll do a good job for everybody and serve you well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lois.
And our second newest employee is Talia Gillette. Now Talia resides in West Kingston, but she graduated from Charahoe High School back in 2012. She received a Bachelor of Arts degree from St. Anselmo's College in Manchester, New Hampshire with a major in politics and philosophy, so she should fit in pretty well there. She also has a master's degree in public administration from Northeastern University in Boston in 2019, and she's previously served as an office intern in the mayor's office in Quincy, Massachusetts. She also served as a freelance reporter for the Charahoe Times and is very familiar with town planning issues and local ordinances. Sounds like it's going to be a very smooth transition into the planning office, so welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here and start my career in Hopkinton.
I thought you were going to be taking most.
I'm glad you're here. I'm glad I'm on board meeting though. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, motions in the city's licensing board?
Check it out.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
First up, commercial pollers license renewals. Open a hearing on renewal of the following commercial pollers licenses. CWPM LLC, 25 Norton Place, Plainfield, Connecticut. Easy Waste Systems, Inc., 67 Ledward Avenue, Westerly, Rhode Island. MTG Disposal LLC, 19 Industrial Ores, Seekonk, Mass. On Time Disposal, 203 Ashway Road, Bradford, Rhode Island. Patriot Disposal, Joe Bonagro, 2208 Plainfield Pike Johnson, Rhode Island. RPKK, Inc., 9 U King Factory Road, Wood River Junction, Rhode Island. Republic Services, Inc., 108 Airport Road, Fall River, Mass. Sanitation by Quint Perry, 7 Sweetland Lane, Westerly. Steve Piccolo, Junior &amp; Sons, Inc., 7 Bloombridge Road, West delivery, Rhode Island. Waste Management, 1610 Pontiac Avenue, Princeton, Rhode Island. These applications filed and notices posted and fees paid and all that?
All but two applicants have filed. We've been in contact with both of them, and they are expected to be filed. So if you wanted to, I would hate to see their licenses lapse because you won't have another regular council meeting in the month of January, and that's when they will expire. So if you consider approval, I would recommend perhaps you consider working them subject to the completed application in the supplemental file.
Which was two of them?
I believe it is Piccolo and I think it was people.
Which is who?
Peter.
And Stephen Piccolo.
I have a question.
Yes.
On time disposal, he does not have license identification numbers and state of origin of the license on either of his commercial poll license applications. He doesn't have a registration and plate number and state of origin of the trucks.
We'll secure that information.
And I have to say everyone else did it, which I was really pleased to see. I'll make a motion to grant renewal to the, all the licenses except we would like Patriot Disposal and Stephen Piccolo, Junior &amp; Sons to complete their applications.
I think we want to try and prove it subject to that, right?
Yeah. Prove it subject to.
Okay, I'll have a second.
Okay, motion made in second, any further discussion? Have you heard that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
If she took care of her sources, we can hear you as council.
Thank you.
Can she make a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, consent agenda. Prove town council meeting minutes of January 6th, 2020, accept the December 9th, 2019 transcript as the record of the hearing regarding Centrica Business Systems, James and Karen Shurenzia, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning ordinance amendment, accept the following monthly financial activity report, town clerk, due refund resulting from overpayment of 2019 mortgage vehicle taxes related by the tax collect.
I want to pull the town council meeting minutes of James and Chris and the transcript because I'm not quite.
Okay. What page is that?
Okay, when we were talking about Mary Ritchie, I know what I spoke in the council president's report, I think there was a bunch of us that did, but I did speak.
What page is that?
Yeah, kind of the page where it was about the council president's, oh yes, page four on top, you intended to make, and I remember a bunch of us talked, and I spoke amongst the Ritchie and I think of that picture. That's why I want to.
Did we tell that? Was there something on the transcript?
Yeah, the thing on the transcript is I believe Petrowski spelled P-E-T-R-O-S-K-Y, I could be wrong, and I think in there some of the transcript, it said I instead of Y. So I would.
Is that on the page?
No, it's well the thing, I noticed on a couple pages, and I didn't need the whole transcript, but I noticed, I believe Dean Grills Petrowski is with P-E-T-R-O-S-K-Y, I believe, I'm staying correct, I don't mind that. I would.
That's how it is showing up in one instance and then in another instance, it has a Y at the end.
All right, so how should we handle that?
I'm in the index in the back, so it references it on, in three instances, it's spelled with an I on page 38, line 9, 10 and 16, and then on the Petrowski spelled with a Y, it's on page 17, line 7.
Mr. President, I, I suggest a motion for just a reference we made, that they need to be reconciled, the record needs to be reconciled with the two different spellings of that name, and approve it subject to that.
Well, I'll.
It has no legal significance.
What?
It has no legal significance.
Okay, I will make the motion empty.
I have one other thing.
Okay.
Page 72.
Right, transcript.
On the transcript. I make the motion, I make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll, I'll make motion empty transcript to be adopted with correction noted in the page, the changing of the spelling of Petrowski be reconciled.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. Great, first public forum, I'm sorry.
You need to hold on to the rest of it.
In the minute that we have.
You want to revise?
Want you to approve the remainder of the agenda?
Check it out.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
To clarify that consent.
Consent.
Stay corrected, agree to that.
Okay. All right, first public forum, again, the guidelines, anything on the agenda? The first, first public forum, you may speak, 10 minute max, 30 minute in total. Whoever wants to speak on anything on the agenda, feel free. Okay, thank you. First items, under old business, discuss and consider scheduling, resumption, continuation of the hearing on a request for amendment to the Hopkinton Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map and the amendment to the Hopkinton Zoning Ordinance filed by Centrica Business Solutions, 1484 Candlewood Road, Suite T through W, Hanover, Maryland, 21076, and Karen M. and James W. Shurenzia, Jr., 201, Chase Hill Road, Ashway, Rhode Island, 02804, for property located at Chase Hill Road, Plat 2, Lot 32, and RFR 80 Zone, heard on November 25th, 2019, continued to December 9th, 2019, continued to January 13th, 2020. The January 13th, 2020 meeting was canceled upon receipt of a request for a continuance from the applicant's attorney. All right, so we need to reschedule this, Lisa, as soon as possible, what are your thoughts?
Well, I believe it needs to be re-advertised. That means that three weeks in advance, the matter has to be advertised, and the bottom notice has to be sent. So you're well into February.
Do you think it's doable with the last meeting in February, is that thing?
We also have all of our budget meetings in February.
Did you want to target your, were you getting council meeting on the 18th of February? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
It's okay.
Yeah.
I don't believe there's any hearing scheduled.
No, okay.
Till February 18th?
Yeah, 218.
That's a two week schedule.
Yeah, because the president stays the 17th. Right. Okay, so that's the 18th at same time, 7:00.
Here at the town.
Here at the town, yeah. Okay, and I just had one quick question for Mr. Steve, a resident had given me a question, I just want to make sure that was taken care of. Was all the information emailed to the abutters that requested it as far as like materials? Remember at the last hearing?
Yes, it was. You should mail to the three people who gave me their email addresses. Yet I'm here, if anyone else would like to be added to that list, that'd be fine. It's possible that there may be some additional information, if there is, at the time it's submitted to the council, it'll also be sent to any email addresses that are given to me at that time, or at this time.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that's been scheduled, all right. Next item on the new business, number one, discuss, consider motion, and possibly vote to accept an offer from SM Trambeano Properties LLC, purchase the town's interest, if any, in a .15 acre parcel of land, approximately 26 feet wide by 260 feet long, located on the southeastern side of Walton Bradley Road, Route 91, in the town of Hopkinton, adjacent to Route 91, and certain land owned by SM Trambeano Properties LLC.
I would, I made a motion to accept an offer from SM Trambeano Property LLC, purchase the town's interest for the $1.000,000.
And as well as elect to make sure that that piece of property is then combined into SM Trambeano's property, that, that's it?
And I also included that motion that the property that SM Trambeano currently owns adjacent to that property be incorporated into that property.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, number two on the new business, discuss, consider, and possibly vote to adopt the proposed townwide fiscal year 2021 annual goals and fiscal year 2224 multi-year goals. Bill McGee.
Thank you. On January 3rd, the town department has met, discussed and selected their proposed FY '21 townwide annual goals and FY 2022 to 24 townwide multi-year goals. These proposed goals reflected in this memorandum that was provided to the town council members with input to the system and budgetary process and future direction of town initiatives. And I think that was kind of important about these annual multi-years, they came from the department heads themselves in order to provide some direction, but clearly the decision as to what you want to do is up in council.
I knew, I knew that the Hopkinton Town Council would adopt these proposed townwide fiscal year 2021 annual goals and the fiscal year 2020 through '24 multi-year goals.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second, any further discussion?
Yes. I, you know, I know one of the things down here is the demolition, you know, that tree school, which is a very sore subject with me, but I think realistically in any of these goals, considering what the Charahoe School District could potentially do to this town tax-wise, I think a lot of goals are going to be hampered because of the initial resources, the Charahoe budget increases take into effect, and I just want to make that observation, thank you.
I'd also like to thank them for considering Chipsey on the Green Road, that's really been needed, so that's a great thing.
Any other motion made in second, I believe, right, Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay, no further discussion? Have you heard that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Next up, number three on the new business, consider budget timetable schedules for budget workshops.
I would respectfully request that we could possibly just do one per week. And the reason being is that once those changes are made, we have to redo the budget, and Brian needs at least one day to get it to me, and then I get it to the council like Friday afternoon, so they have the weekend for the following meeting the next week. So if we could do that, that would be very helpful for the staff.
Yeah, what do you think, Bill Scott?
Well, the deadline date is March 12th.
And we usually have till the 5th.
Yes.
Throw in the supplemental, is that?
Yes, exactly.
So if we start in September, or do you want to start in January?
Yeah, we can't start in January because my budget doesn't go to the council till February 3rd.
Yeah, I, my, of course I work on Tuesday nights, I had to ask for Sunday off and February, but I prefer Monday nights, some Wednesdays I can probably do it, I prefer a second block, but I'm.
The Wednesday's the fifth.
Wednesday's planned for.
Yeah, I also have a sunny morning, they can head out somewhere.
And Thursday, what about Thursday?
The sixth.
Six and, and we do six, 13, 14, 20.
What day should we be done?
Thursday, Thursday.
After the Contamination Commission, like.
They need them there, but they don't meet me here.
They'd be here, it's like on their way around.
But they don't need council chambers, I thought they missed.
Monday's a conflict.
Monday's a conflict.
They're very kind to, to move.
The Thursday.
6, 13, 20.
Yeah, we have zoning at 1.2.
Yeah, 20.
The third, third Thursday.
Block 33 is.
All right, 6, 13, 27.
I don't want to, this last, this block's 30. Republican Town Committee meeting.
All right, 6 and 13, 20 zoning, how about go to the 24th, is we're on the meeting on that?
We did Wednesday.
I'm not on Monday.
Okay.
I'm used to Mondays. So let's, can we do 6, 13, and then the 24th?
Sure.
What day should we be done?
6 and 13 and Thursday, there's two Thursdays.
24 is Monday.
24 is Monday.
What's the next one?
After that?
Yeah.
Start meeting, we have a meeting.
That's it.
I mean, we're bound to this one and two.
Yeah, yeah.
And everybody's scheduled.
So that's, can we all agree on that?
Until we're all agree on that.
All right, so 6, 13, and 24 for February.
And then jump to the 9th.
Maybe the 5th.
Oh, you're gonna stick with Thursday?
Yeah, 5th and 9th. Yeah, because we have a meeting on that Monday.
Okay.
What day is Monday?
Thursday, 5th of March is a Thursday, and then the 9th is that following Monday. Is that enough time, though?
Or do you want to jump to Thursday? What's the Thursday date?
That's the 12th.
What, can we do the 12th? Would that be better, give you more time?
No, it wouldn't be, because if there's any problems, we've got to scramble, that's the last day that.
Oh, it's due.
Okay, so 9 would be better?
The 9th and the 10th would be fine.
9 is fine, 9 is Monday.
Yeah.
So February 2nd, 13, 24, and March 5, 9.
Right. Get that?
I'm trying to check the research.
Yeah.
Just I gotta make sure they have a workhouse, I can, some longer days than I really need to deal with.
I'm just checking the calendar, so, all right, so you're gonna go, I just confirm, Thursday, February 6th, Thursday, February 13th.
On the 24th.
Monday's the 24th.
Monday the 24th, Thursday the 5th, and Monday the 9th.
Right. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, number four, Charahoe Regional School District matters, like, again, I'm gonna put this item on the agenda going forward until the vote in April, I think it's April. Yeah, I've attended a few meetings, Barbara has, residents have. It's not a good situation, it started out at $2.7 million higher than last year. Net-net, it was an increase of two students district-wide, and they added six staff members. So not plausible, not even, doesn't even pass the smell test by a long shot. So they, they've had two budget, actually four budget meetings, two of which they did not vote on any reductions, and then the subsequent two, I attended, they, I think they reduced it by $463,000, which still is not even close. They're still up $2.2 million from last year, and they're going back and forth about a fund balance that I suggested they reduce from 3% to 2%, which will relieve another $560,000 in the budget, and overall, and that needs to happen, and still, again, we have school committee members that don't understand the implications to the taxpayers. So, you know, I was called, and I threatened them, and I didn't, I said, you know, if this doesn't get reduced, we're gonna go to court, I don't know how else to tell them, and it wasn't a threat, it was really a reality. So I was very upset with how things happened, you know, what transpired at those meetings, and all I can say is we're gonna continue to get that budget lower. I want to thank Ron, he's here somewhere, Bryant, Ron Bryant, yes, he was very helpful in a lot of his suggestions for cuts, and some other folks that emailed me on salary issues. So, again, we've got to get this budget lower. My calculations from the finance director, we needed a budget by 1.3 million lower to get us at a 4% town increase. That allows us not to petition the state order to general for an increase above 4%. That doesn't account for anything on our side. We have a budget that was declined last year, so we had to go to a supplemental budget, we have two years of contractual increases for the Professional Technical Union, that's winging over our head, among other things, just trying to keep the town running. So it's really, really problematic. All I can say is I will continue to fight, I know everyone else will, but when the vote comes up, if they do not reduce this budget, we need to turn down this budget overwhelmingly because it goes by a number of yes votes versus no, and typically what happens is Charleston will come out in droves and just approve it, and I personally, it's really, it happened last year, and two towns rejected it, us and Richmond, and they overwhelmingly approved it, and they carried the day, and there you are. Again, this cannot happen this year, I don't know how else to say it, but I just need everyone's help to really get the word out. Again, if they reduce it, I'll know, and everyone else will know, but if they don't, we need to basically turn it down in overwhelming numbers. So anyway, that's where we stand today. I'll let the council, Barbara's been at a few of the meetings.
Yeah, I've been in a number, and we've asked them, I've asked them personally for 1.6 million, so at the moment, they have done 463, which means they're about 2.2. Taking out 1.6 would leave them with approximately 1.2, so as far as I'm concerned, there's another million that has to go. I think it's possible, I don't think it's improbable, I not only asked them for 1.6 million, but I told them where it could come, I didn't take away from teachers, I didn't take away from programs, and I didn't take away from capital, but there is plenty of places where it can drop, and so hopefully they will take a look at this. The gentleman's name?
Ron Bryant.
Ron Bryant, had some wonderful ideas too, and the other gentleman next to me from the Richmond Town Council, asking for the help of unions to start supplying some of the equipment, when it's a $6,000 piece or an $8,000 piece of equipment. So I think this will all work, and I do think they're working on it. I do have a note from Catherine Justy, I'd like to read it.
Please.
Yeah.
I'd love to hear it.
Yeah, well, now it is. I have, Catherine said, you know, good luck with the discussion tonight, and she wanted to let you know that I, meaning Catherine, have already asked Superintendent Daly and Sue Rogers to make recommendations to cut another $1 million from the budget. If we do that, or even a bit more, we'll be at about a 2% increase overall. I had asked for that prior to the last budget meeting, as was referenced in the emails included in the last packet. However, there was a little miscommunication in terms of what I really wanted to see, cuts versus numbers. So she wanted you to know tonight, she asked me to mention it, that they are trying to cut at least another million off of what they've already cut, and so I'm hoping that will be able to be possible, because if not, it is a difficulty, and I also think that it will be voted down if Richmond and Charleston, Richmond and Hopkinton come out in full, because we need it to be known to work then, as far as I'm concerned, 1.2 million, which is less than 2%. Last year, they raised the budget by about 400,000, this year it was 2.7, and I know they have teacher salaries that came in, this is a whole new budget for them, but even with the teacher salaries, there's always places you can cut around the students and around the programs, and I see no reason why that won't be possible yet again. They were able to cut last year, and I'm sure this year it will be a substantial cut. And we do need everyone's help, thoughts or new ideas, and that would be great. Welcome to the school board meetings.
Yes, please.
I would just like to point out, after four budget workshops from the school, the increase for the town of Hopkinton as it stands right now is approximately $1 million.
Substantial.
Let's just lift on the Hopkinton.
Right, and that's before we add children.
No, that's taking.
No, no, that's, I meant, in the coming years, people are moving here with children because it's a great school system, and that will continue to go up, so you need to tighten their budget now before it starts going up again. It is a difficulty, it is a tremendous difficulty. Thank you.
Yep, and overall, in a moment, again, we went up as a municipality, 24 kids, Richmond went down five, Charleston went down 17, so.
Did those kids move to Hopkinton?
Well.
We had the better of them.
So, you know, we've kind of tightened up our locator card process, which, when someone does move in and they want to go to Charahoe, there's a process in place, a more formal process in place for them to appeal, to get their locator card for the school in our town, so it's actually gotten a lot tighter, so I'm encouraged by that also, that, I think a lot of the gray area was in the past, well, jeez, I'm staying with my uncle, but he's really not my, my legal guardian, and so, you know, I want to go to Charahoe, well, you know, jeez, we need something more, more to it than that, so. We need something more to it than that, so. Anyway, it's distressing, and I hope that they reduce it, but I'm not overly encouraged by some of the comments that some of the members made, and I was there, so, anyway. Yes, Joe?
When I reviewed the budget last year, one of the things I found that, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the majority of the classes were really undersized compared to the max. Now, obviously, you don't wanna see all the classrooms at the max, but there were several of them that were ten, twelve students under the max capacity. Now, I don't know what it is this year, I don't know if they hired additional teachers, when they haven't really increased the number of students per class.
Yeah.
I think that has more to do with, like, an AP class might have ten, an AP class might have twelve. The teacher contracts are twenty-five students per classroom for middle and high school, and the elementary is twenty or under. So, they're pretty careful about that, but some of the low numbers of students on the class are usually because they're more specialized.
Advanced.
Whether it's physics.
Advanced placement courses.
Or advanced placement courses. That's what it would be for, it's not a general open class.
Yeah, I think that was the only one, you're right, lucky advanced placement. But there were some where there were twenty, twenty-one students in certain grade levels, and the max was like twenty-eight.
Uh, it's twenty-five. The max is twenty-five for middle and high school, and it's twenty and under for elementary. Which is appropriate for elementary school, and that's hard to do, hard to keep it down to that. Because then you start hiring extra assistants to the teachers. Yeah, they have some things to work out.
Yes, Dorothy.
Well, I think it's difficult for me to understand some of the choices that they make, for instance, why are we teaching Mandarin Chinese? I mean, that's a full-time salary. When I was driving back and forth to Boston, they have a large Chinese population in the city of Boston, but the parents pay for their children to go to after-school programs if they wish them to learn Mandarin Chinese. Now, we're teaching this, and our kids can't even read, curse, and writing, things is. And then to have someone out there, you know, selling, Charroh had another full-time salary, it started as a part-time position, now it's full-time, and I really believe that greatness should be the advertisement. If you have a spectacular program, you're gonna have people beating on your doors to come in. We shouldn't have billboards and ashewite advertising Charroh Technical School.
I think a lot of the reason that they started that was that Charroh was supposed to be the only district that could offer nursing or welding. And the new RIDE personnel, the head of education, has decided that the children, that other areas can open the same subject. And it was supposed to only be Charroh, so now there has to be competition between schools, which is also another issue that should be addressed. And we think it was a mistake from the Department of Education.
Why are the only, why aren't we the only district in Rhode Island that has this?
Okay, it isn't, we have, I mean, there are three technical schools in Rhode Island. One is in Newport, one is up in the Blackstone area, and one is Charroh.
Do they have a paid full-time person that goes out and advertises?
I don't know, I think.
That's what I'm talking about.
No, no, that might be Charroh's choice on that, and I think it was paid originally from a brand, but I don't know now.
Yes, Tom.
The Mets and then Davies still a hundred percent funded by the state.
Say again?
Met School and Davies, that's still a hundred percent, and Charroh still refunded ourselves.
But that's because the rest of the state pays for Davies, Central Falls. We pay for those schools, they can't afford their schools. So, there's a number of schools further north in the state that state taxes pay for, because they can't. So, you not only pay for your own school, we're paying for any number of others.
Which are VOTEC, two of those are VOTEC schools.
Two of them are VOTEC.
Which are competing against Charroh, because we've lost, Richmond, and we lost Wesleyan, and Narragansett, and then.
Well, we started to pick up last year and this year, but.
We picked up on students, but it isn't, but it's still a problem, it's still.
Overall, district-wide, it's only up to, it's, and again, their career in technical center, the revenue increased a million dollars, and they're still up two point seven, imagine if they didn't get that revenue, it would really be a fix. Anyway.
One of the other problems that will be coming up, that the senators elects ask for more help, as well as the school, is transportation aid. Because they have the tendency to take transportation aid away. And so we always want them to put that back, because that's our transportation aid, because we have a very large district in order to transport students. And so I'm sure that will be coming up, and that'll be a fight in the legislature. Maybe Scott can go up and do that.
I know, I want to acknowledge Senator Morton Deppis. In fact, I got her coffee and her leadership, and got to the outside management side, which I talked about three years, and also independent financial audit, which she is probably in, and was in the mail today. I will say this, many people know, I think, very politically, and I don't apologize for that, I think if you're a politician, you think politically. I think the real problem with Charroh, the town councils in regional school districts don't have the mechanical ability to set the bottom line of the school budget, like, for example, Wesley Town Council, if they chose to use it, can set the bottom line of the Wesley school budget. The town councils of Charleston, Richmond, and Hopkin, being in a regional school district, do not have the mechanical ability to tell the school department, this is the amount of money you have. And I do believe we should send a letter to the Charroh School Committee, inculcating some of our concerns, and it's too loud, even if we assume they're gonna follow things. What history has taught me, and I've lived in this town all my life, Charroh Class Seven One, is you gotta be tough with the Charroh school district. Many years ago, I went into a financial town meeting, and we had a meeting format, and I made a motion to cut two million from the school budget, and it passed. Most of the people, over half the people, they were from Hopkin, and I had just lost reelection to the council at that time. And the council members from Hopkin just sat there, and I did that. But, and it forced the school committee to respond to that emotion. And one thing that people really tend to forget about the school department is, even after the budget is adopted, they have the power to move line items around, so even if this budget, whatever the budget eventually is, they have the power to move all these line items around. And that's a considerable amount of power, and having seventy-plus percent of the town taxes go to in the school committee, even after the budget's adopted, can move those line items around. One of the concerns I have, I talked to council president about it, is a fund balance. You gotta remember, the towns of Charleston, Richmond, and Hopkin gave the school district millions of dollars. The Charroh School District budget was tens of millions of dollars, they're getting millions of dollars from the three towns monthly to fulfill the budget requirements. So, the big question is, I think the school department, even if that fund balance is lowered, they're still getting infusion from the three towns for that budget. And that doesn't seem to get much play in the meeting, but I think that's a very important point. I haven't been to any of the budget meetings, which I don't apologize for, I'm sure I'll make the sum. Bottom line is, I've written letters to the sun, Charroh School Committee controls the cards, they control the models, whatever you wanna say. And the only way to get their attention seriously is vote against this budget. It is, and like I said, I'm a political person, like, when we cut, when I made the motion to cut two million, they had to react. They had to have a wake-up call. And if we don't have the towns of Richmond and Hopkin don't get together and recognize the impact of, not only the taxpayers, but the operation of town government itself, that we need a heavy vote in Hopkin and Richmond to kill this thing. And then it forced us as a school committee to do some serious thinking. Now, maybe they're astounded, everybody, and actually make some serious cuts. And I know, many, for many years, I've been talking about this independent management study, which is good from both a policy point of view and a political point of view. The political point of view is that it removes all the local players, and you get somebody that really knows education. They will make their recommendations without the local lens of all the different biases and interests that exist locally. And I think that's very important. And even with that outside management study, they still control the models, because the town council cannot direct the school committee to do something. So, and also, out of respect to Dorothy Goddard, who serves on the audit subcommittee, they need to show more respect for other opinions, including the audit subcommittee, and the people that serve on that, as well as other players, or other stakeholders, I like to call people, the town councils of Charleston, Richmond, Hopkin. One of the things, and I will save my other comment for the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, just so folks know, the superintendent passed away, I think everyone knows that. And the finance director is gonna be retiring in March, so to Scott's point about an outside management study and an audit, I think it's really important when the change of leadership occurs at those levels. I know I was going in there, I had one on it, to make sure everyone was okay, but audits cost money, and they're inclined to spend it in other ways. So, I think it needs to happen, and again, we'll send a letter to them, asking them for that as well. The one question, excuse me, one second, Scott. The one question I never got an answer to last year and this year is whether these increases, what portion is contractual versus non-contractual? I wanna know what's, what we're able to cut, but we're not able to cut. I still have not got an answer, so I am not letting that go. I am, I'm gonna get an answer for it, and I wanna know, of the two point two million that's still left, over and above last year's budget, what is contractual, that we cannot reduce, and what is not? I'm not sure why I'm not getting it. It seems, I don't want it to the penny, I'll take it in large numbers, you know, it's five hundred thousand for stuff, whatever. I don't get, I haven't gotten that answer yet, it's very frustrating, so I will be emailing Jane Daley and Sue Rogers again on that, and ask them, ask them for that particular information.
I like that.
I think, I think that they, they actually did say that, in one of the very first meetings, one of the, I think the first meeting. They did say that this is the contractual addition, which I think was like one point two, one point four million. And then the other part was the additions to the budget in its whole, in the whole issue of it. But it can still be cut, because there is still so much, there's so many places where they can cut. And between their healthcare and their fund balance, which is the largest section, they should be able to cut a million, period. It's whether they can cut more than that. They've cut four sixty-three, I'd like them to cut another two hundred thousand on top of that million. So, we'll see where that goes, and any emails to the school committee would be helpful.
I'd like to offer a motion, but the thing that concerns me is, and maybe somebody knows, 'cause I don't know, how much money does Charroh, I think in the summertime, it's a little less, but how much money does Charroh get from the three towns each month to run the school?
You just take.
Roughly eighteen million, forty for the twelve months.
Yeah. Fifty-five, fifty-two million odd, divided by about twelve.
So, one and a half million a month.
How much?
One and a half million a month.
And he has to pay staff with all that kind of money, and he, and all the basic stuff. I'd like to make a motion, at least for consideration, that the. I move that the Hopkin Town Council Director, Council President, to write a letter asking what the contractual mandated amount of the proposed budget is, for information purposes. I make that a motion, sent to the Charroh School Committee and Acting Administration.
And so there's a motion on the floor for that. Did you wanna incorporate anything else in the letter?
Do you think of anything else?
Yeah, management study, you know, while we.
I'll rephrase it then, and I will say that I move that the Hopkin Town Council have the president send a letter asking for an independent financial audit, an independent management study, and in answer to the question, what is the contractual mandated expenses in the proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Charroh school budget?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
I don't agree with the audit, because when you call for an audit, for an audit.
I didn't say for an exhaust.
So, you just want, like, a generic.
Yeah, exactly, is that a financial audit?
Yeah, 'cause usually you call an audit because you're looking for some difficulty or some criminality, and we're not.
But I didn't read that through.
But I, okay, so, but I do agree with you that a management study might show, an efficiency expert would be able to assist, and I do think that is of value, even if I'm not sure I'm with you on the audit. I can look at it.
And just so everyone knows, anytime they reduce their budget, our portion's only thirty-seven point five seven percent of that, so we don't get the whole amount, obviously.
Are their financial statements not audited currently?
They are, they are.
Yearly.
They are.
Yearly. That's why I'm not sure that's necessary, that's very.
You wanted to get council capital support, I'll redraw my motion, and I will make a motion that Town Council President, you can retry a second.
I withdraw, Mr. President.
Okay, I make a motion to the Hopkin Town Council, write a letter to the Charroh School Committee and the Act Administration for the months in the proposed twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, a proposed budget of a contractual and mandated expenditure proposed. And also, to regen, to conduct an independent management study.
For efficiency.
For efficiency, okay.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any other comments from the audience, or yes, no?
Is there any mechanism available for any of the three towns to look at other expenses like the capital? One thing that brought up in the meeting, we're over three quarters of a million dollars to fix the roof in Richmond, in Richmond Elender School. And I think it's like three or four hundred thousand dollars over what, or over what needs to be. Can we have our building department, what can it say?
They have their own engineers, just like we do, they, their decisions are at the school committee level for those, just like the, the town did something, the town council did. So, there's not much, other than just sending an email saying, we urge you to really look at this expense like you have, and I send it, right? There's not much we can do, because they control it.
Everything that's been cut, you've got four hundred thousand dollars cut so far.
Four sixty-three.
It's been, you know, ten thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars, you're looking at dime stuff, if you can make out four hundred thousand dollars in one shot,
I know.
that would make a lot of sense.
Reducing the fund balance from three to two percent is five hundred and sixty.
Exactly, they can do it, and if they reduce the healthcare.
From eight percent to six.
From eight to six percent, or eight to five percent, that's another four hundred thousand, so that's not a difficulty. But your point about the capital expense is important, because they really do need to look at it again. The problem is, they have to go by RIDE, RIDE rules, and they have to decide, they have to go by a particular payment schedule, union payment schedule, they have to follow a lot of rules, which makes everything more expensive than any of us would pay. But it is something worth looking at, you made very good points on that, I quite agree, I think it's too high by two or three hundred thousand. But they need to look at it through RIDE, because they have to, they have to work through RIDE's approval process, which is, certainly wouldn't be ours.
RIDE or I?
RIDE, Department of Education.
And any real capital expenses, there's a reimbursement from the state of sixty percent, it's housing. So, it's sixty-fourty, they're only paying forty, but they have to dish out the money, and then they reimburse them.
Yeah, we get sixty-one percent at the most, because we have three towns, but if you're Wesleyan, they get thirty-five percent reimbursed. So, they really have it a lot harder than we do on that level.
But the town of Wesley, though, the council has the mechanical ability to limit the school committee, which we don't have that mechanical ability. I think that the town council. I think that the town council influence and power to force decisions is extremely limited. We can send all the letters to the school department, they want to blow us off, but I want you to consider one thing, and of course, I've been Charro's nemesis politically for a long time. Consider this, we have a school committee of 12 people. We have one vacancy. Why is it that when you have a group that large, more people are questioning the school budget, like they should be? And it's like, really frustrating to go to Charro, because when you have that many people, and supposedly intelligent people, they don't ask more questions and they don't represent their constituents, because the school committee is elected position. Just reflect on that statement, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, I'm a little confused on the last motion. Are we going to just send a letter and say, hey, please look at your management? Or are we going to send a letter and say we want to do a financial audit, money audit? I'm a little confused.
Well, they conduct annual audits.
No, I'm not talking to the school, I'm talking, we as a town, can we go ahead and have an independent audit done?
Not on that, not on that.
Not on that.
So we would have to pay for it?
Well, I don't even know if they allow it, because they, it's under the purview of the school committee and the administration.
The thing is that I know, second of all, I wanted to have both, and she sent a letter, which I got in the mail, I didn't read it, but I talked to Elaine all the time. And we can't direct the school committee to do anything, which I think a number of us would say they have a pretty good record doing that, as it is. But an independent management study, at least we took a stand, they don't legally have to do it, they don't have, even if they did, they don't have to follow a recommendation of it. But I think when you're in office, you should know the power of your office and how far you can go. And right now, the way you look at it from the town of Hopkins, the only way to really drive it home is a massive Novo in April against the school budget, unless they markedly do something that would be totally out of character for them and really throw out the budget. We'll see if they're, they're a step up in the play.
I think what I'm, I think what I'm driving at is, we're asking someone who's in question, the question of pretty much, you know, spirit out, because where is all the money going? You're asking these people, hey, show us this, where all this is at. You know, they're kind of self-oddering themselves, and that, that isn't really the closure you all want. But that's where it's at. On the six new positions, Mr. President, what are their specialties? Are they the special needs kids, shop class, the six new hires, or the closing?
I read through the last motion for independent audit, because Councilor Capal, there's only three of us here.
Right.
And we have a B M and Garry to conduct town business tonight. And this, and we're not meeting until the first Monday for regular meeting of first Monday in February. So the second meeting has been moved to Tuesday because of the President's Day holiday, Western Day holiday, Western's birthday holiday. So really, timing's of the essence, but if past record.
And the future.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you've got to assume that if you examine somebody's behavior in the past, it's likely they're going to repeat it, that, but I'm kind of gratified her and Kathy Ducey, I actually, we talk about, that kind of stunned me, to be honest with you, because I don't think, never thought of her as.
Mr. President, the new six hires, what are they going to be doing?
Say again?
The new six hires they're proposing?
Yeah, a lot, well, no, the school committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've hired six. I think they're in support staff and a bunch of others. Yeah, like resort, like.
I P E, you know, special needs children.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly, but there were six, six positions added. And again, with the student increase of only two district-wide, it kind of defied logic. But again, I, I don't know all the components of the budget, I just know the numbers and what they mean to us. So certainly, if anyone wants me to ask the administration, you can email me, I'll certainly email them and get the answers. If we don't have a meeting, I'll go to their budget meeting and ask. But our finance director told me that they added six staff members, increased to 2.7 million, and we had a net increase overall of two students. So that came out at that point, but it's just, nothing makes any sense, Mike.
Yeah, I just, it's, you know, just, I thought about it on the way home today, I don't want to take it above the people's times. Well, I first bought my house on 216, when I finished up my last four years in Navy on a 20-year hitch, we decided to settle in Hopkinton. My house, the house taxes were 2340 a year, okay, that was 2001. Same house, nothing really changed over 17 years. I sold it 2008, 2018, 2018. The taxes were 4100 dollars a year. Nothing really happened in between there. You know, we all got a little braver, got a little older, like we all do. But it just seems like this, just this phenomenon just keeps going up and going up and up and up. Don't get me wrong, I think, I think everybody in this room wants a good, a good school for our kids, or maybe even my grandkids now, but we're paying the price for it, we're going broke on this. I commend you and the other councilors for trying to rectify this for me. And you're right, I've been to many of these votes, I've been outside the door, wait for the door open, then to vote, and there's only X amount. Seems like the last couple of years, people are starting to wake up out of the, out of the hibernation, starting to see, hey, maybe I should go out and vote yes or no.
And just so you know, last fiscal year, our increase was 61 cents on the mill rate. It was directly attributed to Charro and state education being cut, so nothing on the municipal side. 97,000 state age cut, and then the rest of it was about 40 something thousand for Charro, so it cannot continue, so.
It's a big number.
Yes.
I guess, I'm sorry, I'm not, maybe not following this completely, but I'm not clear what the purpose of the audit is, because I thought that they produce a detailed financial report that has a zillion line items on it, so it isn't as if we don't know where the money goes. So I'm not really sure what the purpose of audits are. So it seems like, it seems like you might be sending the wrong message, you know, asking for something like that, which entails an expense for them, unless you have a concrete idea of what purpose you want to accomplish.
I think they deleted that from the motion.
What's that?
I said that.
Yeah, I deleted, I made, I rephrase it, I'm sorry.
That's okay. But again, you know, I think it's a management study, Eric, which speaks to the efficiencies.
Well, that's a different question. That's a different question about like the, the value that's gained from the various categories of expenditures and where you might find efficiencies and all that stuff. So I mean, in terms of a study of how to do things better, that's looking at past practice and prospective recommendations.
That is useful.
That seems like it would be worth the money.
I've been talking about that for so long, that I couldn't tell you when I started talking about it.
But it's also, as you know, I think, maybe for your husband Lindolph, he said it's an opportune time because you have a transition, and so you're not really, you don't have this resistance of criticizing somebody, somebody, somebody who's currently managing things. You know, you're having a transition, so you're by definition going to do things.
Different.
You have different decision-makers, you may or may not do it differently, so it seems like that's an opportune time.
And that, I think would be useful. I think that kind of thing is very useful.
And when you have people that serve in the same position for really long periods of time, this thing sets in where you just keep doing it the same way anyway, you know, it's harder to take a fresh look, so.
Yes, thanks, Eric. Yes, Sergeant.
A management study, it's not necessarily need to be negative. I worked for a company at one point in time, and we needed to have fax machines that would print, not for really heavy commercial use, these were investigative sites. But the person that put the study together looked at the machines that we had in the main, main branch, and said, oh, those are great, we'll send those out, not realizing that they were leases and they were like 500 dollars a month to maintain. And I went around to the sites that I was covering, also investigative sites, that they asked me to do, and I said, what is this? And they said, well, we'd really like to cut back on the amount of money we're spending. And I said, get rid of those fax machines, because you can buy one for 225 dollars to glue it back in, you own it, and if it breaks, just ship them a new one. We saved over a million dollars a year. And it was just, it wasn't because I was wonderful, it was because I just looked at things in a different perspective. Now, another thing that could have happened at Charro, when I was on the school committee, they were saying, we're thinking of getting computers for the children. And I went to the first meeting that they had, and I said to them, you know, the company that I worked for, we had computers and we had to use them anywhere, you know, Canada, California, I tried it with me, Denver, Colorado, everywhere, New York City, and I would write my reports and send them in, and also look at stuff on the company computer via the internet. Oh, when I was at Charro, I said to them at this meeting, they were looking at Apple computers, you know, the Macs, I mean, for like 800 bucks a piece. And I said, you know, these kids really don't need a computer that is greater than the type of computer that an executive would, would use. I said, they don't need all this computing power. And I said, why don't you think of something smaller and more compact and a lot less money? They didn't want to do that, so they ended up paying between 600 and 800 dollars for hundreds of computers. Couple of years later, they've done, now we're paying 200, 200 and something dollars for a computer, which is what they should have started with. But they don't, they don't want to listen.
They speak to grownups.
And this is why, you need a management study to bring in someone that can look at what they do now and how they can make it better, and what they do now that's wonderful that we could share with other people.
You think that'd be well received, but.
That'd be, you know, that'd be audit. I mean, when you think of it, the audit subcommittee unanimously voted, including the auditor, had a safety audit, you know, a deep audit. Nope.
Go on.
Nope. They don't want to do it. They don't want to be audited. Send you letters.
Yep. Yes, Sergeant.
Doravaskis Hellner, Hillside Avenue. First, I want to thank the three of you for responding so promptly to my email voicing my concerns with this ongoing budget for Charro. I completely agree with the efficiency investigation, report, survey to be done on Charro that would hopefully address some of our concerns regarding the increase in the budget. And Scott, I completely agree with you regarding the power that Westerly has over the school budget versus what we have here, because I am a teacher over at Westerly, and I know that the school committee and administration does not look forward to those yearly events with the town council. But back to here, as far as, I see two different mechanisms that are taking place simultaneously with the increase in the school budget. As was stated earlier, Charro was one of three career and tech schools in the state, and when they were first brought on board, the state had agreed that they were only going to have those three career and tech schools in the state. But then with additional commissioners, school commissioners that came into play, they reneged on that. Then eventually, Charro filed a lawsuit against the state for the creation of all these pseudo-career and tech schools throughout the state. So now what we see taking place at Charro School District at our expense is this ideal career and tech school that's looking to be as the model for the rest of the state in hopes of attracting new students, thus increasing the population, and then also increasing the money that's coming in from out-of-district schools. But what I think for us to get the vote out for the no for this budget would be to relay to the town council as far as how it is affecting our municipality. And for me, living on Hillside Avenue, directly across the street from Ashway Elementary, I look on a daily basis, numerous times a day, the condemned building that stands in front of us. 2018, you all had agreed that it would be demolished, but because of the increased school budget at that time, those funds had to be pulled to support the school budget. And I think to wake more people up in the community, if it's published, publicized as far as how, the bits and pieces, that it, how it is affecting us here in Hopkinton, because the way it stands now, we all know, we cannot support this. And especially for people who are on fixed and limited incomes, it's even worse for them. It's, and I don't want to take up more time, but the other factor that needs to be looked at is the Charro Act that dictates how each town is going to contribute to that school budget. The way that it's working now, it's non-sustainable.
It's also.
The Charro Act is a legislative document.
Yeah, I think the thing that I brought up at the school committee just last week is that when you look at the entire school department, there's 3,313 kids, but that's about 13% of our entire populace, which means our budget, 30%, 25% of our budget takes care of 87% of my citizens. That's the difference. And so our children are important, and they really are, and we need really good school systems, but they are taking up three-quarters of the budget for 15, 13, 15% of the, of the citizen. And the other part of the citizens are taking the rest of the budget, the 25%.
That's what property taxes pay for.
I'm sorry?
The largest, the largest item in any municipal budget is schools.
Right.
And that's what property taxes pay for, so that analogy is really not appropriate. The children in your town are always going to, the school budget's always going to consume more than 50%.
Unless you're Charleston, because Charleston's less than 50% of their budget is for the school.
Yep.
So they have 50% to use for their citizens.
Yes, but there's Charleston, and there's Newport, and there's everywhere else in Rhode Island. And you look at the table of mill rates around the state of Rhode Island, we're pretty much in the middle, and nobody lives in that range where Charleston and Newport live, because nobody else has this incredible, incredibly oceanfront property from, you know, non-resident owners. So we've got to get over, you know, being resentful that we're not Charleston. We need to work out our relationship with them and the school and everything. But this idea that, you know, children are the root of all evil and, you know, the fact that they dominate the budget is just a fact of life for every municipality in America. School, school expense is the largest component of every municipal budget in every town in the United States of America, okay? So that's just what the system is, that's what property taxes pay for. Now, this other issue, how to manage the school budget and manage it well, and make them accountable, and have, you know, school representatives that, you know, try to spend money wisely and stuff is a separate issue. But we've got to stop making this analogy of like, oh my God, another three children, you know what I mean? That's not the answer to the problem.
Yes, Eric.
Frank, at one of the school budget meetings last year, you said something that's just stuck in my head. You said.
It's too high.
No, no, I don't even hear that sometimes, because that's always always going to be. But you had made a comment, we should raise the rent. And that's stuck in my head, and I'm saying to myself, so we own those properties and they're paying a dollar a year.
Two of them anyway.
So what's the relationship over there? I mean, when I think about the budget and what their line items are, you've got to be maintenance fees and all that other stuff. What, what's our responsibility in those, in those buildings? And do we get reimbursed anything? We get no credits for it?
No, but they take care of the entire running of the school. They take care of all the things that have to do with the school.
They, we, they rent them from the towns for like a dollar, $2.
That's all the rent.
Okay, so they, they maintain the facilities and the operations and that.
All right.
Okay, that answers that question, because it's been bothering me since you said it last year. And I wanted to make another comment. And I wanted to make another comment in reference to, you know, I'll say it at every meeting and I'm saying it again, they need us to go out and vote on that budget and our town council needs us to bring people. Okay? So I'm knocking on my neighbor's doors and I'm telling them, you know, "You want to complain about your taxes going up? Let's go. It takes five minutes. Let's go." And we did a good job last year with the, no, we just need a lot of people to do it.
Because Charleston came out of droves and over, over right there.
Right. So, you know, great for coming here and bringing all of this stuff up, but they can't advertise, council can't advertise, "Oh, no one about it." But we need to advertise it for them. And, and that's a responsibility I'm, I'm taking on personally, because we're seeing the pain, you know? And this is the same story every year. And last year, the, the town's budget got voted, voted down too. So it was like a double slap, right?
Right. And then go to the former budget, which again, we had increases contractually that we couldn't pay for, so now we have to, we've got two years of that.
For two years.
Professional technical union increases, so. Uh, yes, Tom Buck, I know you...
I'm just going to go along with Mr. Dunn's then about the applicant reviews. When I was going through the budget errands, when I was on the council, I noticed one of their line items ended in backhoe. And they were purchasing a Boga tractor, which is very expensive. I brought it up to them and said, "For what you guys use here, it's not a construction company. You can go to Charleston rental and buy a core tractor, which should do the same exact thing as a Boga, but you're just not paying for the top name. Like the computers, it's all, it's the top name. You've got to handle the vest of it." That was the savings of almost thirty-five thousand dollars on one piece of equipment.
Doesn't matter.
So the feasibility study or the management study, maybe that or things like that. But that's where you, you can see where, that somebody said for the line items, where the money goes, but you don't know what it's buying. You see what line item it's in, but you don't know that they're buying the top of the line of everything they need, and they don't need it. You know, I, I won't go anywhere, because, I mean, I'm, my head, Robert, God bless you, when you and I started, we would sit and dump the dollars and go from line item by line on a budget single.
Yep, and I swear to God, no one else did.
Something you should know also, because I know you've spoken about rejecting the budget. If, if in fact that budget is rejected on April, like...
Twenty-eight.
April, no.
No, I'm sorry, eighteen, nineteen.
Fourteen. If it's rejected, the, the school committee has to address it. They have another two bites at the apple. So there was one year, I think twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, where we had three Charahoe budget votes. And if it's rejected after the third vote, which previously it was not, and it was right to state law. So that's not the end of it for the school committee. If it is rejected by Hockington, like a total vote, no, versus yes, they do have another, two, two more opportunities to drive it.
Good point. So we'll keep up, and yes, Tom.
I just wanted to make one more comment. I think everyone in the United States understands they own property, that the greater portion of their taxes is going to go to support schools. However, we should expect schools to maintain a close eye on the finances in their budget and to keep it at a reasonable level, so that the children who graduate from these schools can live in the community that they were raised in. I don't know of many graduates who can afford to live in Hockington, you know, when they, away from mom and dad in their own little house, because the taxes are certainly impacting not only the mortgages, because the taxes, of course, are incorporated into your mortgage, but also the rents that you pay for a home. So we have a big problem, you know? And certainly, it's not because we don't expect to pay a lot for the schools, but we don't expect to pay so much that we're driving our kids out and we're becoming a Barrington or a Newport, where our own children can't afford to live.
But, you know, I don't know what the number is, but I believe originally before we, and I mean, this thing was low, it was like, what, a five-hundred-dollar increase if you rented your house a day at three-hundred?
Prior to the four sixty-three reduction, it was going to be four hundred and ninety-one dollars extra in your taxable if your assessed value was three hundred thousand. So almost five hundred dollars extra. That's at the two-point-seven. Now, they've reduced it to four hundred and sixty-three thousand, of which our, our portion's thirty-seven and a half percent, but it's still very, very high. I haven't done the new calculation with the reduction, but it's hardly even worth it at this point, but still very, very high.
But you know, what has to be really fully appreciated, I mean, I know that actually, and obviously I pay property taxes, most of which goes to schools, but I'm not complaining about that, but the problem is that for all these families, if they get hit with more taxes, I mean, less disposable income they have, if you spend on family leave, and I, I congratulate and thank Councilor Calvo for that red herb remarks regarding its impact on families. And in your public picture, you're supposed to think of the ability of people to afford things. Oddly, you can't really say people are anti-education when you're giving a very high percentage of your town tax to education, and it's...
And I don't think anyone is anti-education by any means. We really do have good schools, and I think that's great. The efficiency of running them maybe a little better, a little tighter, and having an outside view is a great idea. So we'll see if they can do that. See how costly that is, because they have to put that in the budget too.
Yes, ma'am.
I do want to point out that people are complaining it's a budget, really not anti-education. Myself, for example, when I know the number, my neighbors feel the same way, we are anti-waste. To spend six thousand dollars for six walkie-talkies is just incredibly stupid. So by going over through the budget line by line, we got that down to two hundred and fifty dollars a walkie-talkie, seven thousand dollars a walkie-talkie. Again, that's peanuts, and that's why I want to open a big ticket things like the, the capital ventures up. But certainly, the people who are against the budget or not against education were just against wasting money.
There's a lot of that.
Yeah, I did bring it up to Suizit, they get into Superduty, and discussed with her the possible opportunity to utilize a state program that is for manufacturing called leading organization.
Yes, yes.
And they can maybe freshen their eyes and look at processes and find ways they can process efficiently. They're not looking for cut heads, they don't like anything specific, just be as efficient as you possibly can. I was told flat out they're not interested, they've done it already internally, and they know how to do it better than anybody else. As it turns out, the state is not interested in it, because this, this program is only for manufacturing, small manufacturers in state. But there's no question in my mind, that all is not needed, what is needed is, is a fresh set of eyes, being outside, to find the waste, whether it's thousand-dollar walkie-talkies or whether it's using a fax machine that you could buy for two hundred bucks at Costco.
And it's a private company. Fax machines, those are private companies.
Yeah, but there's, there's plenty of ways to, to save significant funding without affecting the education.
You know, just two things, is again, when you have a school committee who is short of twelve members, there's no excuse without more people pushing for the same answers, and they have the power to do something about it. And also, as a councilman in this, in this town, the ability of support staff that we could hire and really is needed in this town, and things that we should be doing in this town for this, for the operation of this town government, we don't do because of Charahoe. And we've tucked it up for Charahoe for many decades, actually. And I don't know what, the tax rate is about seventy-five percent, I believe, right now. You can correct that.
The rejected budget was seventy-seven percent, the alternate budget was seventy-six.
Yeah. So, but anyways, you know, peddlers, you know, people say, you know, "You got to do this for the kids." I mean, that's a pretty, great sacrifice for a town to give that high percentage. And police, and public records are biggest components of our municipal budget, general government. But anyways, I'm probably not going to say anymore. I got my, I got the motion passed, I feel good about that, and I, I hope Catherine Joustey with Mrs. Calvo said she was suggested another thousand...
Million.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. But anyways, it's, so hopefully, the school committee will surprise me and really be serious about the budget, let's see.
So that's that, folks. Stay tuned. I'm going to keep this agenda item as a standing item on the agenda going forward until April. And I asked the school committee members to attend tonight, but they had their meeting tonight, so there's got to be a meeting that they don't have a meeting, and I'll ask them to come, and we can also share our, our concerns with the budgets going forward. Thank you for your...
Now, I would like to thank Mr. Bryant for your, your input and everybody that's helped you, but I know you're not, you know, town official, I appreciate it. Obviously, you did your homework. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, folks. Okay, next up, boards and commissions, number one, discuss considering possible vote to reappoint Dan Rudi at the alternate of the zoning board review.
Salute.
Second.
Motion made in second, and any discussion?
None.
I don't hear none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Last public forum, meaning not on the agenda, ten-minute max, uh, ten-minute per person, thirty-minute max. Eric, you wrote first. Adam? Someone take us over a minute?
Hi. I just wanted to raise a few issues and have to think about them, possibly at a future meeting. The first one is, I believe, I didn't research this recently, but I believe, I recall that the town is required to review the chart, the town charter, no less, you know, every five years or more frequently than that. I think it may have been more than five years since the charter's been reviewed. I think the mechanism for reviewing the charter is the appointment of charter commissions, which considers recommendations from all quarters, including you. So I just wanted to suggest that it's time, and maybe you want to ask the volunteers and try to get that going, because I think there's some, there's some possible, well, definitely needs to be done every year, several years.
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
Lisa, have we had any members currently sitting around?
We have made various attempts to get that populated. I believe there may be three, but it's a minimum of five and a maximum of nine. As soon as we get to four, somebody moves out, somebody resigns, unfortunately, somebody passed.
Oh, okay. So as far as, so we can confirm the three, and then we just need two more.
Who are the three? That leads into...
I'm not sure if they're still there.
We'll, we'll look into this first.
It seems to be normal.
Yeah, yeah, no forum yet, so.
All right, so then the next point is, I know there was some discussion last summer about the website, and I think one of the critical shortcomings of our current website is that I honestly have never seen, I mentioned this last summer, I've never seen a website for any town anywhere that I've seen, and I'm familiar with, I'm not saying I've seen every one of them, that doesn't list boards and committees, list the members who serve on those boards and committees. So when you go to the Hockington website and you want to see if you happen to know anybody on the charter commission or the planning board or whatever, you know, you're just looking for a place to be of service to the town, you don't even know who serves on any of these boards and commissions, because we don't publicize that. That's a pretty easy fix. I don't think it's costly. I think any webmaster can throw that up pretty easily, and I would really strongly urge that we make it possible to see who populates these boards and committees.
Then it's in the works.
Seems easy enough.
And the first thing we try to do is get everybody's agendas and minutes up. I felt that's a priority. And we are working very hard to get that done. We also were criticized about the website calendar. We are all working very hard to make sure that that is not lapsing. Takes considerable effort, it's not just me, there's a number of people involved. But yes, I've got nearly the whole thing ready to go to central.
And I think these criticisms are...
Helpful, I don't...
In a constructive, in a constructive way, because obviously, you know, we may call the criticisms harmful.
Constructive.
You can't do things better unless you identify the things that you don't know.
They're criticisms, not criticisms.
I think that putting the names up might be a whole lot easier than putting up a long history of minutes, so maybe that could get done, because that's not, that's not a time-consuming exercise, but it would be helpful. And then, let's see. Oh, the other thing that I think is, when you look at the website, and this, I think, is a really substantive problem potentially. I mean, I actually ran across this issue on a specific ordinance before. The ordinances that are populated on our website, I believe, are from two thousand and seven. There have been some pretty substantial changes in our ordinances. I think they were, I think some of the core ordinances were revised since that period in time. So I know that I personally researched one of the ordinances and learned later that, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't like one of these zoning ordinances or something that are organic that would change over time. It was one of the basic procedural ordinances that had changed. But if you go to the town website to try to, you know, see what the rules are, those aren't the rules anymore. Those are really obsolete. So I would suggest, I mean, I really think that you should take them down, because you shouldn't have them.
There's so many changes needed, right?
Well, it's just because it's, that's, those aren't the ordinances anymore, and you run the risk of misleading people about proper procedure and any number of issues. So I would suggest that two, two things should be done. I would take them down immediately. Maybe you have some copies of the ordinances here, I don't know what to do. But the other thing is, I think you ought to prioritize the issue of putting the current ordinances up on the website.
You know, this is a point of information. If you ever ask for a copy of the Charahoe Act, it will say right on the sheet, the front sheet, unofficial compilation of the Charahoe Act, just as a point.
Yeah, I'm going to make, just as another data point on this, I mean, I actually went to the trouble of asking our atomic clerk to give me a copy of the current ordinances, but, you know, it was a bit of a project, and I got it, you know, on a thumb drive or something, but they should be available to everyone. And I don't know what that requires. There are services that do that, I guess, MutiCode or whatever it's called, but I, I think you should explore that, because I think that's a long time, but they're pretty stiff.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to go there?
Yeah, you can.
Rod Bryant, Francis Carter Drive. Obviously, the whole reason I was getting involved with the school committee was taxes and trying to make sure that the money is well spent. And in doing so, I looked also at the proposed budget for the town for next year. I don't see on here where the income is from the solar projects. Is that, did it identify something on there?
Yeah, we haven't really finished, we haven't started our budget carrying process yet, Rod.
Okay.
We just scheduled our meetings for February.
We don't even have a copy of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, so this, okay, this last year's, okay.
So we answer your question, yes, so we've gotten a lot of permitting fees, that's one-time typically, so that's, that's in the town banks. But as far as the revenue, that, a lot of them haven't come online yet, so.
Would that be a tax lobby? Is that what the revenue was? Anyhow, line, what, what type of...
It will say revenue. When we bring it up, it'll literally say revenue.
Okay. All right, okay, I misunderstood, I thought this was just coming years.
No, that's, that's...
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, ma'am. Yes, Chi?
Hi. I was just curious, or I'm curious, so I applied for the Economic Development Council or Commission, and I know that we're in a situation similar to the charter commission, it sounds like, where we wait for people to apply. But a lot of it's been talked about here, especially with the school budget and a lot of the issues that come with solar installations, is we need revenue, we need...
of the issues that come with the solar installations, is we need revenue, we need revenue, we need revenue. So, um, I don't know how to draw off interest in that, but it does seem like there are a lot of people, at least here tonight, that care about these budget issues. And I really think that, I'm willing to help with this stuff, I think there are a lot of people up in it that might be willing, we need to start as a community, if we wanna address some of these issues. I really appreciate all the effort that the town council's putting in to looking out for our needs and, and part of the school budget, but I think as a community, we actually need to start stepping up and, um, uh, participate in some of these commissions. We don't have to be experts, uh, we just need to start coming up with ideas and different ways to address some of these budgets. So this is a bit of a plea from my perspective, um, just to say, if you know anybody that cares about this even a little bit, encourage them to apply for the Economic Development Council or some of these other groups, because time's ticking. And, um, the more time we just sit waiting for people to apply, the more time we're blocking, which we, we need to, we're gonna help these problems if we can present some potential solutions. Okay, it's one thing to just go and complain about what's happening, but we're more likely to be, um, effective if we can start to present solutions. Even if the solutions aren't, they don't work, we need to start throwing some, some hot darts at the board, so that's all.
Thanks, thanks, Chip.
Well, I just wanna shake this guy's hand. I have waited years for somebody, for the residents of this town to come alive. We got the solar on some issues. Have a good night, everybody.
Anyone else for one?
I'd like to make a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I'm, this isn't a confrontational question, I'm just confused. What is the complaint procedure if there's an issue with one of these installations? Cause I recently heard from some people, um, up from Maxine Hiller, you know, they're crushing some rock up there and the way they're doing is they're taking these huge boulders and slamming them into the bedrock. And one resident said they had a cracked pool, other residents have complained about, um, they're getting issues with flooding and stuff like that, but I don't know who they should talk to.
Yeah, so good point. So I think really direct them to Bill and Bill would direct them to Sherry or Lisa Buck or Jim Lefebvre.
I know they were up there Friday, uh, Courseman Engineering and Jim Lefebvre, um, and they advised that, um, there was gonna be some work being done on the stone entryway off Maxine Hill Road where they wanna put the poles to narrow the national grid. But most of the work, the vast majority is gonna be coming in from Route Three and they're gonna move all of those, uh, the trailer and all of that equipment that's at that Maxine Hill Road entrance exit, they're gonna move that all down Route Three.
Well, if you wanna make, if you wanna make the town aware of an issue, should first point of contact be the town manager?
Yeah.
Because this issue, it's kinda scary hearing about this, picking up giant boulders and slamming them into the ground and rattling things off people's shelves and cracking their pools, I mean, that's pretty substantive. Other people are reporting that they're getting changes in the, like their wells are being fouled, and this has happened in other towns, by the way. I mean, there's, you know, I don't know to what extent these building practices can be altered. I would think that, you know, smashing rocks close to someone's house, maybe even move away, you know what I mean, stuff like that. And that's why I think it's worth while to report these things.
Yeah, and report, and build it directly.
I know they, they go up there every Friday, uh, Courseman Engineering, Jim Lefebvre. But I'll, I'll talk to Jim tomorrow.
The other thing was mentioned was one of the residents, uh, and I kind of truth to many of this, you know, I mean, whether it's as it appears or not, but one of them reported that, um, they had, you know, stripped and removed a lot of colonial, some of the colonial stone walls and sold the stone. But you can't do that as a private resident, I don't think, I don't know whether the developer's allowed to take those walls and alleyways, stone and sell it, something like that, but, but you're the one that should raise this one.
And they're also building swales right now to keep water in. They're building some, they're using the rocks, they're building the swales to, um, bring the water, so the water stays pure.
Well, there've been some issues, definitely been some issues in the runoff that some people's property goes down.
I think they're putting it to attention, basically.
You know, if you read the, if you read the report, the agreement that they did with the EM, they're supposed to, they're supposed to make, they're actually supposed to make temporary swales before they remove any stumps, because when you remove the stumps, you're disturbing the soil. And they didn't do that. They took out all the stumps before they made any of the temporary swales. So these water, these sediment control procedures are supposed to precede the work that creates the problem and they're not doing it in the proper order, but we don't have, we don't do any monitoring of this in terms of, uh, you know, the proper procedure and the people who suffer are the residents, you know, your constituents, the others. So, um, and then there doesn't seem to be any resolution process to these complaints that's clear to them, and that's why I'm asking, I just wanna try to convey this information.
Yeah, direct them to Bill and then Bill will follow it out and figure it out. Yes, Ron.
The information that Mr. Giffler has is completely false. They're not slamming rocks into the ground, they're using a hydraulic rock splitter, which is a low-impact vibrating tower splitter. They're doing it, I would say, less than a hundred feet, come out somebody bedroom window. Nothing moves on the walls, we go out and stand on the deck, there's no vibration in the deck, you can hear the machine, but it's, they're not picking up big boulders and dropping them, trying to crack them that way.
So all I can say is, I will have-
Do you always interrupt people?
Okay, yes, thanks.
It doesn't seem like everybody has the same experience and it didn't happen to me, so I'm not a first person, it's not necessarily into you.
I yield to Mr. Bill, because he's obviously more important than anybody else in town.
Point well taken, Ron and Eric, I understand where you're coming from, we'll figure it out.
Well, he's, he virtually called me a liar, okay? So I'm just saying I've heard this from someone.
Right, so, all right, got it, see you. Thank you for your comments, both of you. All right, Scott, did you have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion over here in memory of Leland Poston, who's, uh, late husband, who was also a councilman, Charles Poston, sixty to seventy-two.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, goodnight, folks.